Welcome to Heritage TV's coverage of the Scott County Board of Supervisors meeting. We had audio problems at the beginning of the meeting, but here is what happened. All members were present. The agenda was approved. The minutes of September 2nd, 2020 were approved unanimously. In Citizens' Expression Period, Teresa Ford talked about lowering the speed limit and issuing other safety issues concerning Highway 71. Public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend and reenact in its entirety, the Scott County Public Procurement Ordinance to reflect the laws that now stands in Title 2.2, Chapter 43 of the Code of Virginia. No one spoke on the hearing, and it passed unanimously. Public hearing on the possible adoption of the ordinance to continue the emergency ordinance to effectuate the temporary changes in certain deadlines and to modify public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity of operations associated with the pandemic disaster adopted on April 1st, 2020, and readopted on May 6th, 2020. No one spoke on the hearing, and it was passed unanimously. Lonesome Pine Regional Industrial Facilities Authority Opportunity Zone Planning Grant Agreement was passed unanimously. Route 65, Virginia Department of Transportation Resolution passed unanimously. Amended Town of Gate City Parking Lot Agreement passed unanimously. And now we join the meeting in progress.
For the additional hours.
Obviously been issued, I mean, I think it's ideal for you to do this, but anyway. So this request, I think we need to approve it, and without law of discussion, unless somebody needs to discuss it, we need to do this, so we entertain those to support this time change with the parking lot agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bricky has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Second, in discussion. All three votes say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the Calum Perry Engagement Letter. If you had a chance to read that, and Ms. Arndt can speak on it too if you need to.
I have been speaking to the other county administrators globally, and was asked how they were handling the training for the local temporary guidance that were required to have an infectious disease preparedness and response plan, and how they were handling the training side of that. And Dickinson County told me about Calum Perry from Blacksburg, that's who their attorney was working with to get their training and policies done. So I reached out to Mr. Chapman and talked to him about that process and about getting us an engagement letter, which I've had the board review already. We will have a training video that is how we'll handle our training for the plan. I had worked on the plan, and Sally had reviewed, and we had that pretty well set. And he sent me the final red line yesterday, and I have a call with him today, and then we'll be ready to roll that out and let the employees do their training on the preparedness. And it's just what steps we take. Well, we had to do an assessment of all employees and their roles, and classify them, whether they're low risk, medium risk, up to very high risk with COVID exposure. And then we had to come up with a plan of how we're going to treat issues where there's employees that may be positive for COVID and those type of plans. So I'll be sending out your final copies of those in probably the next couple of days. But this engagement letter just states that we will be paying them a flat fee for the training video, and then an hourly rate based on any other consulting that they do for us. And our CRF funds will be able to pay for this because it's all related to COVID response.
All right. I'd like to get an idea to do this engagement letter, so without any other discussion, unless you have something to talk about, we'll do it. But anyway, do we have a motion to approve this engagement letter? I'll write the start to do this.
So will Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tippin made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All three votes say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Moving pretty quick, it's more than 30 minutes, and we're down item 13. All right, the next item is a resolution in support of the Community Development Block Grant for the Black Gun Water Project. And that project is moving along pretty well as far as getting funding. And those folks, when they came here, I think it was in July, they were pretty desperate. Work with Lenohysco people, Marshall and myself, Mr. Bricky is on that, on the Lenohysco Board. And they did pull this one out separately to get it funded. It's looking very favorable. There's been already some money, it's approved for it, and hopefully that will happen sooner than later. There is a new round of grant funding coming, it's in October this month, is that what they said, Marshall? Yeah, it's gonna happen. Usually that don't happen in October, but it's going to, and it looks like. And so I think this will get some favorable funding in the near future. And so with that being said, this resolution of support, the one thing that the folks in Lenohysco said that we did hear when we declared that local emergency was walked off the ball rolling. So you board, we had a special call meeting on that, and I was so glad everybody was here. It was a special call, we usually have a special call, you don't get everybody, but everybody's seen it important enough to be here for that. And it was so important that we did. And it was unanimous, we voted to, on that, with Mr. Bricky, put that in place, we voted in support of it. And so when those folks came in the desperation, a lot of them went to their house and seen what was going on with them. And they are very, very appreciative of what this board has done to get this ball rolling. Anyway, this resolution in support of it, I think it's a no-brainer that we do this. And so Ms. Arndt, you want to discuss any more about it, do you need to say anything? Or Ms. Kegley?
Mr. Kimber's here, he would like to say.
Okay. Yep. He talking a little bit ago, there's some blanks there because they're anticipating some additional stuff to happen. So go ahead, Mr. Kimber, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Frank Kimber, Lenohysco Planning District Commission. As you noted, we've been working, as all the different entities involved in this have finally gotten into the same orbit, that's helped tremendously. So there was a Coalfield Water Development Fund Award, I should have it committed to memory, but I-
$118,360.
Yeah, $118,390.
$390.
And that will be awarded toward the project. Our office is prepared to commit a portion of its General Assembly allocation for this project. But what we're also doing is taking advantage of an unusual opportunity, by unusual, I mean, I've been doing this for 29 years, and this has never happened. So that level of uncommon community development block grant program is having a second round of funding this year, and that deadline is October 30th. And that's what we're working on specifically right now, is to put together an application for that particular piece of funding. At the time that I sent a resolution to you county administrator, it had some blanks in it because this project is still, it remains very fluid. What I have today is what we think it's going to be. Again, there's this advantage of having board meetings early in the month when the deadline is at the end of the month, and there's a whole lot of things can change in that span of time. But what we anticipate at the moment is, is that we will be requesting $300,000, I'll give you these, there's four blanks in here, I'll kind of go down one at a time, $300,000 in block grant funding. That is actually based on the number of connections we anticipate. We're looking at 20, and block grant allows a maximum of $15,000 per connection, so that's where that $300,000 figure comes from. The second paragraph blank there, that's the total project cost. And we're looking $668,390, 668-390. Fourth paragraph, there are two blanks. Again, we think we're expecting to serve at least 20 households, we put 20 in that blank right there. And based on the income surveying we've gotten completed so far, we anticipated that those 20 to 14, if not more, will be LMI, because that's roughly the percentage of the income surveying results we have so far. There's a few more we're going to get now. So that's, at the moment, that's the numbers we're anticipating. One thing I did mention to the chairman right before the meeting, again, since the block grant request is based on the number of connections we're able to get user agreements for, if we can get more than 20, and I'm saying we will, but if we were to get, say, 21 or 22, that would enable us to ask for more dollars. So my question to you all as a board is, while today, while I'm standing here saying we think we're going to be asking for $300,000, if we could in actuality ask for 15 or 330, again, based on more, would you be amenable to giving us that leeway to essentially alter what your request is going to be? Because the application request and the supporting documentation like this resolution, they expect that to match. So, and again, sometimes the timing of board meetings makes that kind of complicated when something this fluid as this particular project is still-
Can we do that, Sally, before we don't have the exact numbers? Can we do that, would we need to meet again, a special meeting?
No, I think you can leave it to his discretion.
Okay, all right.
Well, so today, I've given you the four numbers that we've got as of today. We're looking at requesting $300,000, 668-390 for the total project cost. We're looking at those 20 connections, and estimating 14 of those LMI households, and that's in there because that is the nature of this particular funding program, block grant programs, in effect to the little minority of persons.
Is it $118,000, that's separate from?
Yeah, that's the, that's the, the $118,390, that's included in the six, yeah, that's, there's three pieces. There's that Coalfield Water, $118,390, the $300 we anticipate asking for, and then the two, the remaining $250,000 would be from the commission's general assembly allocation. That's today.
Yeah, I just wanted to-
Right, yes, I think that's a good question. There are three pieces, three pieces of funding.
The folks are thinking about this, I mean, to get this kind of attention this quick, I mean, to get money like that, and I think this, the Community Development Block Grant, I think that'll happen, I really believe they'll get it. And Lenohysco seemed to think so in July, and said he seemed to think it'll happen. But to single this project out is unusual, to do that, and so, but they did the extra step in trying to get this done, and some of y'all went to visit those people. Stephanie, she took cases of water to them because she seemed the need, and a lot of of you have responded well to this. And so Lenohysco has been a great partner in this, and we couldn't have done it without them. And so anyway, y'all took this and run with it, frankly, we really appreciate it. Those people up there, you go over there, they're gonna hug your neck, I'm telling you, you go over there and be like, they go, thank you.
Well, I've had it all be real friendly to me up there so far, but that's been the extent. If I may add a couple of other things to this topic. Again, this is such an unusual opportunity, and that's why we put it together fairly quickly, because this opportunity presented itself fairly quickly, at least for this particular pot of money. Oh, I add that, this is a good start, we had a public hearing on this project last week, and there are a couple of fellows showed up that are in the area beyond, where you come up that road and you cut onto Black Gun, and the PSA's been looking at that project for a bit. They were from that area, and they knew they weren't in the project area, but they're willing to help us. Because we, I spent, so usually the hearing class, just, you know, nobody typically shows up. Well, we talked for 50 minutes that day, and I came to the background project, and then, you know, where we got to the point, what we're doing right now, and what's ahead, and they were very willing to help with, you know, to serve essentially is what the HCD costs communities park plugs, and they're willing to do the income surveying and all that kind of stuff. And so, you know, for the next phase, because if we can get this one funded, and they will announce these very quickly, unlike the regular funding round where it's late summer, before you hear something that you send in in March. They say they'll have awards announced by the end of next month, which is another unusual circumstance here. So, but if this one is successful, and while we, you know, we hope that it's successful, we could actually then look at doing the other phase by this coming, by this next spring, the regular funding round. And also on top of that, we noticed during the discussions, you know, Athletian Regional Commission, they have what they call distressed counties. Scott County is not a distressed county, or as your neighbors in Lee and Wise are distressed counties. Where that comes into play is primarily is residential, in this example, residential utility projects, which distressed counties can use. A non-distressed county is more like for transportation or economic development, that kind of thing. But a few years ago, ARC started having within at-risk counties like Scott County is, that they would designate, if certain census tracts met those distressed criterias, criteria, then they would designate areas of distress, even in a county that wasn't. And so starting this fiscal year, which means the next ARC funding round, those two census tracts up there in the county are distressed census tracts. So in at least those two census tracts of the county, ARC will be a viable funding option, where it has not been before. So not the entire county, unfortunately, but-
So what made that happen?
I don't know that. It's just the various, it's the various economic indices that they add up to make this thing. And that's, that's just going to be a brand-new thing, starting this, you know, a year from now, it may change, because it does change. The county, county distress designations can change from one year to the next. But anyway, for that particular project, for the second phase of the project that rests in an area that is now an ARC distressed census tract, so we could actually conceivably bring ARC to that, to that project where that's something that we just haven't been able to do before. So that's just for future efforts, but I did want to make you aware of that, because we only became aware of that in the last few days. Anything else, me, Mr. Chairman?
Could I say something before you leave? And this is not directed at you, I think it's directed more to PSA members. Am I correct in understanding that this money will not supply any money that's going to the PSA? This is above and beyond what the PSA is currently planning for other areas.
Correct. I don't think we know at this point what's going to happen, even with the money, you know, with PSA at this point. So not sure if we know the answer to that question yet, unless you have any light on that.
Now, all I know, all I know is, again, this is kind of come up, you know, due to the, you know, due to the issue with the residents up there and their water loss. This is, this is just three funding pots that we can bring to that project, just due to the timing and circumstance of that particular project. PSA's ongoing funding pursuits for various things that it's doing, whether it's doing work with contractors, doing work with force account, whatever, I mean, they have their ongoing strategies, funding strategies. This is just, this is just something specific for this specific project.
That's great. And what I was trying to do is just set the people in Scott County that have water projects ongoing, that set their minds at ease, that it won't disturb their projects whatsoever. This is separate from-
No, this is, this is not altering PSA strategies at all. This is just, this is just an opportunity for these particular things to be brought to bear on this particular project.
Good job, we appreciate it. We really do.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to thank Frank for coming today, and pass on to the director, and then if you have the director of the Coalfield Water Project area, you know, pass on, you know, our thanks, you know, for what you guys are doing.
I'll do that.
I know it's been a lot of work, and appreciate what you guys have done at Lenohysco in this regard. We're all about team, teamwork's together, and that's what it's all about.
And I'll thank Mr. Tippin, I should.
One thing I'll say about that Coalfield Water Board, Dwight Miller, he's Executive Director of Lenohysco, and he's also on that board, so it helps having him involved in this, he is a board member of that Coalfield group, so it helps. Does he chair that meeting, that group?
I don't think so.
Probably not. Anyway, he is a member of it, I'll bet. I talked to the folks at MME, and they put me back on, Dwight, Dwight already, he had things going before, he mentioned it to him, and I found out he was on that board. And so I was looking every way we could to try to find money, and it's worked. And one thing I want to say, you know, this, I want the PSA to be 100% on board with this, no evangelists about it, they're on board with it, get it done. That's all I want to say, but I do it with them, and the work get to them, and I want them on board with this 100%. Nothing less than that, the 100% cooperation to get this done.
I'd like to thank you too, you and Mr. Miller for all you've done in keeping me informed, and I just really appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you, I'll relate as well. Like you said, it's good to work on these things, if we can, if we work on this thing again, we'll figure it out, so. Anything else, me, Mr. Chairman?
That's all, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. One thing he missed about being a distressed and non-distressed county, the other three parts of Lenohysco, Lee, Wise, and Norton, they're considered a distressed area, and Scott County is not. I know, been a couple of meetings ago, we had Dwight mention about some projects that they were getting, and Scott County wasn't, is because we're not considered a distressed county, which is a good thing. And it's because of our closeness to the Kingsport area, Salton County, we're counted in that metropolitan area, sort of, that's the way it works out. So it's not a bad thing in one way, because we are not distressed like the other places are. So that's the reason for that.
Could I add something, Mr. Chairman? It would behoove us, you know, as a county, and then as, you know, with PSA as well, that we would work together, you know, with Lenohysco and any other funding agencies, because, you know, they know what they're doing, and we're all about, you know, doing the same type of, you know, business and helping and to serve, you know, the great citizens of our county. And so Darryl and I are on the PSA board, we'll take this back, you know, to our board. But, you know, I just appreciate Mr. Kimber for coming today and sharing, you know, what he did with us, and I think it's just awesome, it's great.
All right, and we'll need to vote on this resolution. Do we have a motion to do so?
Make the motion.
Ms. Tippin made a motion, that is her district, we appreciate you, the work you've done, lots of visiting the people, and so she has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, yeah.
Ms. Krueger, second. You got your own record now, seconding something.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, second, any other discussion before we vote. The resolution you had before you, and he went over, like I said, the blank numbers that are there, they may change it before the deadline at the end of October, that's okay to be a positive, not a negative, so anyway, we've had a motion, a second, in discussion. All three votes say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item is the VACO voting credential. I've seen some of you have sent an email out that you wanted to participate in that, and it will be virtual, is that not correct? It'll be done at Zoom, or however, how they're going to do that. So who was it, Ms. Hood, did you, were you going to be involved in it?
Yes, I was going to participate.
Okay. Well, that's good, if they will do that, and so I usually go, but I'm glad somebody else is going to do it, and I won't. So either we get to travel, we do it, this year we're not traveling, so it saves some money in that area too. Anyway, the meeting will be, that part of it will be on November the 11th, to November the 11th. And it'll be number WebEx, whoever will do that. So we need to vote to give the voting credentials, just one up for you.
I also need to know if anybody else wishes to attend first. So I have Stephanie, Mike, and Salma, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We need one with voting credential rights and an alternate.
Okay. All right. And what they do at the end of the meeting, when they have it, they'll have a separate meeting at the end of the day, and then they'll vote on some things, you'll have the credentials to do the voting on that last day. Are they going to do it all in one day?
No, the virtual conference is November 9th through the 11th. The business meeting will be November 11th at 10:00 a.m.
Okay. The business meeting is when you'll do the voting, so. Anyway, for those three to go, and who wants to have the voting credentials? Ms. Hood, you want to do that?
Sure.
All right. So we will vote on that, for those three to attend, and then for Ms. Hood to have the voting credentials. We have a motion to do that.
I also need an alternate.
An alternate, sorry. Ms. Krueger, you going to be the alternate?
Sure, thank you.
Not leaving you out, Mr. Bricky, feel okay?
It's fine, I'm brave for that.
All right, I don't want to leave you out, you know, if you was throw in there, but anyway, that would, that's what we will have, so do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion.
All righty, Mr. Harrow made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tippin, second, in discussion. All three votes say an aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Next item, we're going to spend some time talking about this, the Solid Waste Site Proposal. The different proposals we had, we went over it, so you're going to, come on. Go ahead, state your name for the record.
Officer Cook, hours, St. County Labor Control Officer. We've talked about this quite a bit as a member of the Solid Waste Committee. That way it will be real time, we'll figure it out. There we go. Basically, three objectives come from our meetings, to establish set hours and days for the sites to be open, and I'll go over each of these objectives in a little bit more in-depth. Create a schedule for the sites to be staffed when open. Utilize both county employee and Scott service workers to assist in manning these sites. The first objective is to establish set hours and days for the sites to be open through numerous meetings of the Solid Waste Committee, and we met with a lot of different, different proposals in front of us to sort of see kind of what all was out there. And we kind of came back to saying, well, the best way to manage these sites is to operate those on a set schedule where they're manned. You know, now they're, with the exception of a few, they're open, you know, around the clock, seven days a week, there are a few exceptions to that. You know, some things that occurred at these sites, items placing incorrect containers on the ground, items that not accepted there, being placed there, when instead they could be taken to the transfer station, non-resident usage are examples, that if there's a staff member there, whether that's a county employee or a Scott worker, then that person could assist that citizen with proper placement or direction on what they need to do, whenever it's open, if someone's on ground, that should help out. Our bordering Virginia jurisdictions operate with a similar schedule to the one being proposed, and these, these stats are off of these counties' websites, Lee County, 13 sites manned and open, 0700 to 8pm, Wise County, 10 sites. Opens varies, there's a few open on Sundays, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 6. Russell County, 11, and it's kind of a mix there, some open on Sunday, some not. Washington County, 14 sites. We actually are, I believe we have one more site than Washington County, and they also operate with various opening-close dates. And some of these sites use the Packer technology, which requires someone to be there to operate that. And I know Washington County for sure does. The second objective was to create a schedule for the sites to be staffed when open. County's 15 sites are divided into three levels. This allows the sites to be staffed when opened by paid county employees, which I abbreviate through the presentation of CE. Scott program workers abbreviate as SW. Your Level 1 sites, that's Hiltons, Yuma, East Carter's Valley, Duffield, Nicholsville, those sites are open 48 hours per week over six days. All the sites will be closed on Sundays. The Level 2 sites are Antioch, Dunghannon, Daniel Boone, Fort Blackmore, and these sites are open 40 hours per week over five days. And your Level 3, Moccasin Gap, which was, just kind of came back in on us there, as we'd closed it because of the construction, but now we've relocated a little ways down the road. Mandel, Clenchport, Highway 58, that'd be in the site that's furthest out, Bristol Highway. Dryco and Fairview Sites are, we turn to Level 3, which is open four days a week, 24 hours total. We'll look first at the Level 1 sites, and this is your schedule. We have a mix of primarily early days, and then with one late day for site each week. Hiltons, Yuma, East Carter's Valley, Duffield, Nicholsville, Monday, 7 a.m. to 3 p.m. Tuesday, 9 to 5, Wednesday, 8 to 4, Thursday is their late day, that's 12 to 8. Friday, 8 to 4, Saturday, 9 to 5. All the sites will be open on Saturdays. Your Level 2 sites, there are only four on this proposal, that's 40 hours per week on five days. Once again, all closed on Sundays, early Mondays, 7 to 3, 8 to 4 Tuesday, 12 to 8 Wednesday, that would be their late day, Thursday, 8 to 4, close Friday, Saturday, 9 to 5. And Level 3, which is six sites, four days a week, 24 hours total, close Sunday, Monday, 7 to 1, close Tuesday, Wednesday, 12 to 4, Thursday, 2 to 8, Friday closed, and Saturday, 9 to 5. closed, and Saturday, 9 to 5. And your total weekly schedule, if you look, once again, still all closed on Sundays. You have a late day at each site, that being closing at 8 p.m., new variants and opening at 12 or 2, depending on the site level. And, you know, the county employees work 24 hours a week, so that kinda, that kinda adjusts how much you can be open, and still use the supplemental labor afforded by the Scott program. And that's what we'll look at with Objective 3, and that's to utilize both county employee and Scott program labor to assist in manning the sites. Now, being on the ground means that they're on the ground working, they're assisting the citizens in any questions they have, helping them place things into the green boxes or the junk box or metal box, keeping the grounds clean, so they're working while they're there. The proposed system, three levels, allow for both CE and SW to staff the sites. In some cases, and at some sites, Levels 1 and 2 only staffing will be both county employee and Scott workers on alternating days. By assigning a level system that was designed to maximize the Scott participation hours while limiting that program staffing commitment, you know, they have so many people working for them, with people spread all over the county doing great work, it's really hard to come to them and say, hey, can you give me 15 employees that can come out and do a good job for us? It's imperative that the ones we do get are really kinda the cream of the crop, they're gonna be there on time, the transportation and items like that. With the, kind of the changes that occurred with Moccasin Gap and the construction, we tried to, we shifted a few schedules around just to try and keep people on that side of the construction, so you wouldn't have the holdups we talked about earlier, trying to get to your work site. If you live in Fort Blackmore and you're trying to get to Yuma, then that could be a problem any day of the week. And then flipped over, once they switch sides, so it's really hard to make that happen, but we've done a pretty good job of it. But with this proposal, you would need five total Scott workers. There's already two in place. You have one at Nicholsville, and one that's, was at Fort Blackmore, but he's now working in Carter's Valley, plus three new ones, one of those being part-time. And we'll be able to look at that a little bit closer on this. This is just your Level 1 and 2 schedule. And if you notice, Nicholsville is purely Scott worker, that could change, you know, with that person that's in place in green, you know, if his schedule requires a different day, then that could be switched around, but your Scott worker 1 would work Monday, Wednesday, Friday at a site, Tuesday, Thursday at Antioch. That way they get their 40 hours, our county employees still getting their 24. Same with Scott worker 2. And then you've got Scott worker 3, as you see there in gray, the one that's kind of a part-time, they would be kinda bouncing around there between those two sites. Off on your far right column, CE, that's your hours worked by the county employees, Scott worker being the other number, you know, they're working 40 hours a week. There's a couple, there's one site, Duffield, that has two county employees, so, you know, that's 48 hours there between those two, but the others would need some assistance from that program. And we spoke with them in length, and they said they can make that happen. And this is your schedule, proposed schedule for your Level 3 sites. Once again, these are all county employees, they work 24 hours, Level 3 sites are open 24 hours a week. That's pretty easy to come up with that schedule, there wasn't a whole lot involved with that. And if you look here at our county map, red is your Level 1 sites, blue is your Level 2, green is your Level 3. In the original proposal, it was broken down into five sites per level. Moccasin Gap, we've changed that up to where it's a Level 3 now. So you've got five Level 1s, those are 48 hours over six days. Level 2, you've got four, those are 40 hours a week, spread out over five days. Your Level 3s are 24 hours a week over four days. And that's it.
Good presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Could you, you or Bill, one, spend some emphasis on, as to why this is happening? I think that's important. Because, you know, most people look at this, taking their trash to the solid waste center and so forth, as a matter of convenience, and it is, and I get that. But I think if you shed some light on as to why this is taking place, and what, you know, the issues are, and of course, it boils down to, you know, the money that we have to operate, you know, to do what we're doing, you know, with, so if you could do that, yeah.
In addition to that, Marshal, I wasn't aware that there was a new site at Moccasin Gap, has that been moved down to the Red Dot, Jake, or is that, I didn't know about that.
That's in the process, but that's not.
Not happened yet?
Not happened yet, no, sir, I should've mentioned.
Do you think it's gone there?
Yes.
More towards the Waterloo Gap end, of that big spread down in there, will be moved to that area. It just hasn't happened yet. They met pretty recently and agreed to do that, and just sort of swap ends with us there.
And they took in, like, tries to?
It's a pretty busy site, yes, sir, yeah, definitely.
Will that be a permanent move, or just temporary?
It'll be temporary, Red Dot's working on a 12-month agreement.
And it will be manned?
It will be, we have it as a 24-hour-a-week site, Level 3, one county employee covering it over four days. I'll have to look back at my schedule for it, but it's the one that's, that's got the most closed days, open Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday at your Level 3 site, so that would be the new one, it hasn't happened yet, and I should've.
Good job, you and Freedom, woman. Committee.
Yeah, committee's been brilliant.
Yeah.
We met quite a bit, you know, originally, we met to sort of look at the Packer-type system, and then, you know, to have that system in place, one, it's obviously not free, it's very expensive. And then, I mean, down to just having, you know, electrical work done at the sites to support them, and then to have that, then you have to have someone there to operate those. And so, we can have someone there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, so obviously you'd have to open and close it. And then, then it kind of, you know, we looked at this system to where it was just open and close with staffed people there. But, you know, we mentioned, you know, there's several things that go, that go with the sites.
I just mentioned, you know, this project, you know, with all deals coming up, the trucks, and we've had all three of them bill, and I'm sure we'll share some light on this, and this is not the first.
Just in the last couple of weeks, we've had all three trucks down. You know, it's a sad thing, 95% of the people use the sites like they are to take the trash, and it's convenient to have them open all the time, I'll use them late in the evening sometimes myself. However, we've had people abuse that convenience, too. Contractors are loading us down with material, building material, going into the junk box. The junk boxes are for somebody that needs to throw away a couch, have a place to put it, they don't have to take it to the landfill. But most of the time, when you go to the site to throw away your couch, it's full of construction debris. You can, you can see that number at a transfer station, where we used to get contractor debris at the transfer station, we don't get it anymore. We're going to the site. Some of the contractors, some of the more reputable contractors are still coming, but that number has dropped off tremendously. We've had people do demolition projects, turn down trailers, things like that, just loading up the junk boxes. We've had a, we had a engine block put into a green box, and when you put that into a $200,000 Packer truck, and that hydraulic system tries to push and compact that, but it's designed to compact household trash, it tires stuff up. Just this last two weeks, we have taken two of our cylinders to Kentucky to have fixed on two of the Packer trucks, in the meanwhile, having to rent Packer trucks to operate. So it would, it would help with that as well. I know people like having them open, I know it's a convenience, but that's all it is. It's a convenience to have them open. There's logistics that we have to take care of as well for the county. We got rid of half our attendance. That wasn't a logistical decision, that was a budget decision. We knew that we were gonna have trouble on the sites. We had to make a decision then, whether to reduce the hours of just having the sites open 24 hours a week, or try having them open without them being manned. So that's the consequence of having them open without being manned. And I do hate it for 95% of the citizens of the county that like having them open, but I guess that's any law that we deal with, there is our place for that few people that wanna do it their way.
Having said that, then hopefully there would be some new signage and so forth, so that.
Certainly, we'd have the hours and new signage.
Yeah. There are other ways they can go, find out, you know, on the web or something, have any?
Sure.
I think we would be looking at, and of course, that's on your own vote, but this wouldn't be something we'd start next Tuesday, you know, we would wanna put that out months in advance, and to allow for circulation of, you know, word of mouth, see the signs, things of that nature.
You might want to make a deal about the tire, if you dump it, it's way cost.
Yes, if we have a tire that sneaks by, that's put in a dumpster, the landfill that we haul to charges us 25, or $50. $50 a tire? $25. $25 a tire. And the guys at the landfill, you know, they'll look for them as, as we dump, and have to dig them out of the trash, which is a safety issue to start with. But we had maybe four tires get through a couple of months ago, I don't know the numbers this month, but a couple of months ago, we had four tires get through that we got charged for. I talked to the guys at the transfer station, they had pulled 25 tires out of the trash that came through the green boxes. So, that's a, that's a huge thing. It's, there's just no control.
So what could people do with a tire?
They could bring them to the landfill.
Okay.
The transfer station.
Do they charge them for bringing them up there?
Yes, unless you're doing a cleanup or something, if you're doing a cleanup.
If you do two, three tires?
Two, three tires, it's like a dollar a tire. And the reason we charge that fee is because we have to pay to take them to Wise County and do a Tiffany fee.
I mean, I think that's what people would know, because since you have a number of tires, you know, coming in.
Right. And I don't really think that is, all of those tires are coming from citizens as much as it is from some sort of tire dealer ship, whether it's people that a rental garage has paid somebody to haul their tires off and do the right thing with them, just throwing them in the dumpsters, I know that's occurred a few times, without the control of stopping that person at the site. Just follow-up law enforcement. I had talked to Scott County Telephone Co-op about putting cameras at the sites. You know, to have cameras like we have at the Stone Creek Park and places, you need Wi-Fi. But the telephone company has a system where they can put up cameras that you can monitor, and it's always recorded. But their current workload, they wouldn't even bid on it, or give me a price, they just said that they were unable to provide that service at this time. So that'd be something that we can do in the future, once they're available.
That committee that we pointed back, been over a year ago, to come up with something, and this is what they proposed to us. And we asked, Mr. Tipton asked Mr. Dingus to kind of give us, give us some reasons why, what is it per ton? Now, is it still $27 a ton we pay to?
Yes, total and total.
And so, when you throw these other things in there, and that's to, that's fixed the penalty for tires, or you damage something, because I heard once it's like put a transmission in a box, you know, that causes some issues. We, and folks, we gotta, you gotta regulate this, you cannot just let it go. Probably 90% of the people are doing exactly what you're supposed to do. That 1%, 2% that will go out there and do things, and it causes everybody to suffer for it. And since I've been elected, and Darrell, you can, I'm sure you can relate to this too, but that's been one of the biggest issues since I've been on this board, is the trash centers. They want them open when it's convenient to them, and I, listen, I understand that. I did, I got the trash service to fix mine up now, and they do that, and it's helped me a bunch, it's worth it to do that, and so any way you can do that as an option, then I'd have to ever have to go to the convenience center. But anyway, it'll take a while for people to get used to this, we can advertise it, so people will know that it's gonna happen, that they can adjust around it. If it's open 40 hours a week, some of them 24 hours a week.
Some of them are the Level 3s, the ones that are used in the leagues are for four days a week.
So anyway, using this Scott service program, plus the existing employees that we have, and I think we have a working solution here that will fix the issues we've had. And I know it'll take a while to adjust, I remember when Sheriff Peck was here, he works along the hours, he said that he wished it'd be open longer during the day, because he couldn't get home in time to get his trash off and that kind of stuff, and there is some, it's gonna, they're gonna have issues getting their trash taken up. But anyway, the proposal that we have before us, we, we were gonna do it last month, and we kept, kicked the can down the road a little bit, to make sure we had everything like it should be, so the right, you know, the answers could come before we even have the questions, we would know what the reasons for it, why we're doing this. And so, anyway, I hope the folks in the county understand, it's their tax dollars that we have at work here, and trying to be as effective with their tax dollars as we can possibly be. And that is the whole deal with this. And so, anyway, anytime, any disposal that you have, there's cost issues with that, and we're trying to minimize that as much as we can, and not tear the equipment up and have it to where we can, this debris from a demolition project, or whether it's, you know, contractors bringing their leftover debris from building, dumping in there, they're planting shingles, you name it, they will do it if they can. Like I said, most people are conscientious of what they do, but they don't care, and they care about, their community care about what we're doing, but some don't. Those that don't, the out-of-state trash, the out-of-county trash, we can regulate that a lot better, too, by having someone there, and these hours being. And closed at night, I think, is a good idea, because you see all the other counties are doing that. I drive one by all the time near Coburn, it's, you go there, past 7 o'clock, it's closed. And all the other counties are closing them except us. Anyway, discussion.
The other alternative is with the Clinch Hunch River, that people would come around and pick up.
That's who I use.
Yeah, for a fee. I'm not sure what the fee is.
$25 a month.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's another option, you know, for the people, and I think they're picking up business, so. I mean, if we're talking about convenience, I mean, that's another alternative, so I thought I'd throw that out there.
Another reason we're having to do this is where they're throwing trash in our metal recycling dumpster. When it gets thrown in, then we can't recycle the metal, and that's causing a big problem.
Anyway, anybody else have any question for these two gentlemen?
Yeah, I understand it's a problem, but, you know, and it is convenient, from what I understand, the county don't even have to provide places like, all we have to provide is like the landfill.
Yeah, the transfer station is open six days a week, from 8 to 4. So anybody that goes to the site that's closed, they have somewhere to take their trash.
Yeah, I appreciate what the committee's done, and everything that they've done, I mean, it's been, to do what you showed us as to hours, you know, that, I really do appreciate that, but. I know it is causing a problem for the Packer trucks, but I can't, I can't justify punishing 95% of the people for 5% of the problem. You know, I really, I wish Scott County Telephone Company would work with us. I really think that would help put 24/7 eyes on that, on that facility, you know, wherever, especially the problem facility. Maybe not have them everywhere, but.
Maybe not have them everywhere, but, you know, have them at the problem facilities. And I know, you know, the only ones that I've ever been to, I'll be honest, is Nicholsville and Antioch. I've never been to any of the rest of them, you know, and I've never seen a problem, which there has been problems at Nicholsville with some trailer type destruct or trash, whatever that is, I don't mean to come out with that. But anyway, some materials like that, I know there has been...
Demolition stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. But still, you know, that's just probably one person. And I truly do appreciate the committee. I do. But I feel like there's other alternatives other than closing them. Or closing them at a certain period.
Okay. What would those alternatives be?
Well, the cameras would be the biggest thing, I think. I really think if you put eyes on that, that that would deter people from doing those type of things that you described. You know, if they know that they're being watched and we can go back and prosecute these people for putting tires, for putting engine blocks, engines, whatever they're putting in there, motors, things in the wrong compartment, that, you know, to me, that's gonna stop them. It might not. I mean, people might be that arrogant. But once you convict people from doing that, eventually they'll have to stop them. But I know it's, that'd be a big deal, putting those cameras up, but to me, that would be an alternative before we go in this direction. That's just my opinion. But I truly do appreciate your work and the committee's work. I mean, I know you've spent hours. I do appreciate that. You know, another fear that I have, you know, when we do close these, you know, even now, when they're closed on Sundays, there's probably, I don't know the number, but there's several times that you'll, the worker will show up and there's trash outside of the gate. I guess, you know, that could increase.
Does that happen as often as it used to, Bill, but leave the trash in the gate?
It still happens occasionally.
Yeah, it's occasional.
A lot of times if we're closed on a holiday, it'll happen.
But I do appreciate your work. I don't want you to make the wrong one, but I just, you know, I do feel like there is another alternative.
I agree completely on the cameras. I like it in conjunction with it, but I mean, I understand it, and that's the best proof you can get.
Right.
You know, they, it's hard to deny it here on video. I agree on the cameras. I wish we could get that. At least, like you say, I don't think we needed it at Rycove or Far Fairview, but those ones that are identified as like a level-one site, it would be a benefit, I agree. I mean, it really would.
And it needs to be a camera that we can access remotely.
Right.
And look at it anytime and play back. Now, we have those types of cameras at different facilities, like at the transfer station, at the animal shelter, here, but you have to have Wi-Fi for those to operate properly. And, you know, I can reach back out to Scott County, but that was about a month ago that Roger told me that they were just so busy that they couldn't take that project on right now. Which, I'm taking that account wise, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
But it makes it harder for us to get our cameras in.
Right.
And what I confronted is the co-op, they have got a $9 million grant to put the whole county eventually to get high-speed internet, and so it's a, and they're kicking in $3 million themselves, the phone company, so I know they're gonna be busy. They are.
And something that might, you talk about Wi-Fi, I know, I don't know the timeframe of when this will happen. I do know Nicholsville will end up having Wi-Fi sometime in the future, free Wi-Fi. Maybe we could utilize that.
If we have a site like that, we can put up our own camera.
Right.
We could have IT, put up a camera, just like we did at the Stony Creek Park.
I think that's gonna be in Dunham, too. They're gonna have free Wi-Fi down there.
Well, they already got it.
Okay, they got it.
It's already in the life shack. That was the first one to get put in was Dunham.
I think 13 out of 15 right now.
Well, if you have Wi-Fi, that's gonna create a job. You're gonna have to have somebody to view all this footage, or it ain't worth a nickel. That's gonna create a lot of, I mean, somebody would just constantly have to be looking at the footage of 15 sites if you had it at the sites. To me, that would be a big expense with the cameras, and it'd be a big expense of somebody having to view all that, and then you'd have to turn around, turn it over to the law, and they'd have to investigate it, and he'd have to give tickets and all this stuff, and they'd have to go to court. So it's a good idea, but it's gonna create a lot of extra work when you put cameras at all the sites and then have to, if you put them up and don't view it, then you might as well not have them.
I'm not sure how the people would like that either, I mean, in video that way, but I mean, that's a good alternative. We weighed that out too, you know, in our committee. But I think the big issue is the trash not getting separated, and so there's a large percentage of people that's not separating their trash the way that needs to be done. And that's what's really causing a lot of problems.
That'd be hard to view on a camera, too, to see if they're putting this in the right place, it'd be hard to do, but I like the camera ideal, but I'll give you, I like the idea, but the same idea is when we formulate a committee, and I put a lot of stock in it, because if we don't take what the committee does, then we shouldn't even have the committee. But that's a recommendation from that committee, and I think we need to go with it, and maybe in conjunction with the cameras too, and see maybe down the road, we can do something different once we get Wi-Fi placed in places where we can do the cameras.
I mean, I don't think the committee was really opposed, you know, to the camera. That's one of the things we've talked about, you know, in our committee, in trying to work through those issues. But there's a lot, like Darrell says, you know, that goes along with that. So we have to take all those type of things, you know, into consideration.
The committee really discussed stuff and banged heads on a lot of stuff. Now, I myself wasn't, I tried every way in the world to figure out a situation where we didn't have to close them and talk to the committee. But that's what the committee finally came up with, so that's what we're presenting.
Yeah, I think better than looking at closing them is just, you know, it's different hours, you know, of operation and their man.
Right.
And it's not that we just really wanted to man the sites, it's just, there has to be some sort of control because it's costing the county a lot of money, and as I said earlier, you know, with the logistics of it, I mean, that's, I think you mentioned that, Bill, so that's what we gotta look at. And we gotta, we're representing, you know, the citizens of our county, and so we gotta look at the best alternatives, you know, for, with the monies that we have, unless we wanna raise some taxes or, you know, place some more fees on the people. And that really wasn't an alternative that we really wanted to discuss, so.
The Scott program has given us the opportunity to do what we're talking about without adding staff as far as paying more people to be there and keeping them open longer. There's several hours that you see on Stacy's PowerPoint that's manned by Scott workers that's at no cost to the county.
Can I mention, while discussing this, this is not only off of track, but it's on one particular site in particular, on the upper end, on Hilton's, that doesn't have the fence on the back, and there's, and I'm sure you're aware of it, and people do come in when the gates are closed, and they still flop right in on the backside of it and bring their, you know, stuff in there. And oftentimes, they don't make it across, they just make it hard on the attendant, you know, that's there too, so hopefully that's something that you guys are looking at. I think it's cleared off enough, you know, to where a fence could be put on the back, and there used to be one there, but it was taken up, I'm not sure what the reason was.
Any other discussion?
I'll just mention while we're discussing this, I mean, this is one of the things that we talk about the most, you know, it seems like as supervisors and on a board meeting, and I guess, you know, VDOT, you know, is right there with it, you know, and, you know, and I've always maintained that our trash situation is not getting better. It's, I mean, there's more things that are going into the trash, you know, in today's world than it were, you know, 10 years ago or 20 years ago. And I'm not sure from 20 years ago that we looked at it, you know, today as to what the logistics will be of it, so that's what we're having to deal with.
Anything else? Do you have an effective date you want to put this in? When you want to put this in place?
I think it is.
Effective? What did the committee come up with as far as an effective date?
We just, we didn't come up with an effective date, we just, I guess...
Got it down there.
Yeah, determined.
Several months.
Yeah. We wanted to give enough time, at least, you know, to do some advertising so people would be aware of it.
Yes, sir.
You know, the folks are not using the transfer station, and what was that, the hours, what, five days a week?
Five days a week, Monday through Saturday, 8 to 4.
You know, years ago, people, I mean, and it was just as inconvenient, you know, many years ago for people to go to the transfer station than it is today. We have better automobiles and things today, we can do it. But typically, people don't go to the transfer station like they used to many years ago to take some items that should be taken to the transfer station, as may be opposed to go take, you know, putting into a dumpster that's local, and again, that's, you know, a matter of convenience. And so we get a lot of things that are thrown into a little solid waste facilities that really ought to be going to the transfer station. And I'm sure I'll catch a lot of, you know, rollbacks from it and phone calls, but I mean, that's just, you know, the fact of reality, and that's where we're at.
It's much easier to dump at the transfer station than it is to throw something into a dumpster. You can just roll into the transfer station and on the concrete floor and pull it out on the floor. You don't have to pick it up, so. I wish more people would use that. But like you mentioned, it seems like people don't know about it.
What are the fees associated with that if they come to the transfer?
If a contractor brings contract waste, there's $40 a ton. But for a normal citizen, regular citizen, bringing household waste or furniture, or tin from your barn you took off, or what have you, there's no fee.
Okay. Any one else? Do you have anything recommend as far as an effective date if we do this, then we have to vote on here in a few minutes, but do you have a recommendation? Mr. Wayne, you want this put in place? Not 12 o'clock tonight, I don't get it.
No, sir. No, sir.
No, please.
Yeah, I would think after the turn of the year, January 1, maybe, or, January 1's always a hard date to deal with because of, you know, the holidays, and that's always a logistic nightmare anyway for the trash. So I'd like to see that settle down a little bit, so even February 1 might be a better option. It's kinda quiet in that area. You wouldn't wanna do it right before Christmas?
No, I was thinking the same thing, but I was thinking January 1, but February 1, I mean, I think that would be viable too, maybe it'd be better.
Yeah, February 1 is on a Monday.
Okay. All right.
21.
January 1 is on a Friday. I wanna do that.
Yeah. February 1 would be four months out, so that would give people, give time, give the signage up and let people know about it, so.
And while we're, you know, at it again, and I know we're beating this in the head, I know that some of the centers have been taking some of the dumpsters out, you know, for getting them painted and redone and that sort of thing, but I know some of the sites have been left with less dumpsters, especially the larger sites. So we need to look at that.
Okay. I know we moved dumpsters from Moxon Gap to Hilton's, Mambo, and Antioch. And once that closed, we've seen just a very insignificant uptick of those sites being full. So I was curious about that, whether those sites would just run over, but we haven't seen that.
You mean it's full about everybody?
You mean it's, is it different from before we did Moxon Gap?
It's been that way for...
And Hilton, Hilton's existed.
Yeah, we, that's one thing people don't realize, like Mr. Herron said, he's been to two of them. People focus on the site they go to and say, why can't you do this here? We have 14 of them throughout the whole county. 12,000 tons of trash a year that we're dealing with. We're emptying, we're hauling like three semi trucks full of trash to the landfill every day. Running two trucks on Saturday and three trucks when we have them operating every other day of the week, plus the rolloffs. So it's a lot, a lot of trash that we've cut budget on a lot in the last few years as well, and reduced our manpower down to three trucks, which is, you know, our thought process of having newer trucks in a 10-year rotation is, was the, that we don't have to work on them all the time and have trucks. But those new trucks are so complicated that there's so many things that can tie it up that it seems like we're always working on a truck.
Right.
And stuff being in the trash it shouldn't be, certainly doesn't help that situation.
Yeah, okay. Just a couple of weeks ago, all three of them was out again at the same time.
Up until the day before yesterday, we had all three trucks down for a different reason. Two of them was the cylinder, the packer cylinder, which is directly related to what we're having to pack. And then another one was some engine issue that we had to fix.
Any other discussion? So we're looking, if the board so approves, effective date, the February 1, 2021. Any other discussion before we...
This affects all of us. That includes us too, you know? We don't, we don't like it either, I mean, you know, we do it as a matter of, you know, convenience and so forth as well, so. I mean, I like, I mean, I don't know, at the times that I've grabbed trash up, you know, take it out, and I run down to the center and I forgot, you know, what the time was or whatever, and I end up hauling it back, you know, to the house. And so, yeah, it's frustrating, and it's frustrating for all of us.
All right. Any other comments?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, with the date that's already been discussed, that we deal with the one February date, and in the meantime, you know, get all the signage and the publicity that we need to, you know, get out there.
Okay. All right, Mr. Tipton has made a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Brinkley, second. Any more discussion? All right, everybody say an aye? Aye? A否? Okay. So it's 6 to 1, and we will proceed with this, effective February 1, 2021. Lot of discussion, and it's very important, and you know, down the road, we may make some changes and introduce a bit, but anyway, there'll be some people, it's hard to get used to, break the close dates, to get used to that, but anyway, that's one of these jobs to deal with. And thank you, committee. Who has something, committee besides you, Darrell? Okay. I started saying Darrell, but if I did, I'd go wrong, I thought that was correct. Been a while since we've done that. Let's take a minute, a minute, probably back to order, the next item on the agenda is item 16, Mr. Brinkley, if you would, please.
Please appropriate $2,500 to E-911 for repairs and maintenance for reimbursement received in deposits at Treasury's office.
All right. Well, items, all you have, do we have a motion to make appropriations as described by Mr.?
I make the motion.
All right, Mr. who made the motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Chairman, second. All right, everybody say an aye? Aye? A否? Motion carried. Next item is appointments. Christina is here, if you'll do that.
You have one position on the safety empty board, and this is...
You have one position on the safety empty board, and this is a position for a parent of a school-aged child. You do not have any applicants. Lisa Fields has been serving, but she did not reapply for this.
Or do we have any nomination for this comprehensive policy management team? The last time we had to do a lot of calling and trying to get somebody to serve on that, so hopefully we can. Is there any nominations, I was asking again? It's just advertised, Freda?
Yes.
In the paper and everything, kind of. You know, only one wants to serve on that, and it needs to be apparent if you, you know, to serve on it. And so if you can, it'd be great to have someone that we can get on that, on that position.
Freda, I know you sent out a description of what this involves. Is that through social services and dealing with adolescents?
Yes.
Problem adolescents.
I don't know about that.
Not, not necessarily.
It's not?
There might others, if anyone.
I know somebody might be interested, I'll mention it.
Okay, if you would. All right, next item is the county attorney item. Ms. Caglin, you have anything for us?
I don't have anything to add to my report. I can answer any questions if you don't have any.
Any questions for Ms. Caglin? You've done a good job, nobody's impressed or anything, so you don't get it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Arns, you're up next with the claims.
You have your claims in your pocket. Treasury's account bills, your court balance after the claims is four million, four hundred nineteen thousand, eighty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. That is an increase over last fiscal year, as you'll note on your chart. Claims for the month, we had some early claims, the normal AEP, Scott County Economic Development Authority, that was money transferred for a loan payment, and Vapecor Insurance, twenty-four thousand, five fifty-two were some of the bigger ones. Early claims total, three hundred six thousand, six hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. On your regular claim sheet, I'll just highlight a couple of the larger ones, seems like they were all large this time. Advanced disposal for August was thirty-seven thousand, six hundred sixteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Appalachian Juvenile Commission, October through December twenty twenty, fifty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars. Commonwealth Distance License and Maintenance, twenty thousand dollars. Lots of pine regional library, that's their second quarter allocation, plus some PPE and cleaning supplies, fifty-one thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. Mobile Communications America, that's maintenance and hardware refresh for nine-one-one, forty thousand, nine hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. Scott County Life Saving Crew, forty thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. That is their number one allocation for this year. Scott County Rescue Squad Association, that was from Cares, or CRF funds, fifty thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and twenty-two cents for an oxygen generator for all squads. And Virginia Department of Forestry for fire suppression, nineteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-six cents, and that's a yearly amount. So total claims that need to be approved today are eight hundred five thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
This, where it's up for the year, is that cost tax money's coming in, or is that some of the COVID money in that?
The COVID money is not included in this account. The tax money has started to come in, I looked yesterday, and so far we've collected nine hundred thousand in taxes, just on the real estate side. Also, last year at this time, we were paying that huge regional jail reconciliation amount out, and this year, you know, we got an allotment back from the regional jail. So both of those, plus some tax money coming in, is why I figures contribute into the change.
Thank you.
That amount we got reimbursed, was it eight hundred fifty-four thousand? Is that what we got back from the regional jail?
I'm not sure if that's the exact amount, but it was around eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, eight fifty-four, my memory started to be correct. That's one of the reasons, but compared to over last year, you know, we're pretty good shape financially, and so I know the taxes aren't coming in, that makes a difference too, but it did last year too. But anyway, we, financially, we are, we're doing okay.
Our numbers are going up in the regional jail, just as a side note. And one of the big reasons is because of our number of inmates that are being held over two years. And I spoke to the Lee County administrator yesterday after a meeting that I was at with him, and he said theirs was the same way. And it's where they're not moving DOC inmates out because of the COVID. So our number of over-two-year inmates right now is at thirty-seven. And it's the highest it's ever been.
The word is, he comes into mind, but when it's twenty-nine, and I, we've thrown a fit over, now it's thirty-seven. Wow. You know, I don't know, that's thirty-seven people, times forty-one dollars a day that we're paying to keep in there. That should be, see, they'll reimburse us in some way for that.
So what do you do?
We get a small amount for the state inmates, but nothing to cover the full amount.
They should be paying, if they're here, they should be paying for it.
I agree, and I will contact Senator Pillion, he was, Senator Carrico, when he was there, he helped with that. And actually, when we first done that, we were the first county to throw up a red flag or something wrong here, and the other counties got on board too. And we got down like, they still didn't take them, like twelve or thirteen, it didn't take it down to that much, but at twenty-nine, I've got thirty-seven that we're having to pay for.
Yeah, I think it's time to, to speak with Senator Pillion and probably, and Derek.
Yeah, W. Kilgore too, because that's just totally unacceptable.
As long as they pay you, I'm perfectly fine for it.
Oh, yeah, they'll pay us, sure, I am too, but, you know, but it should be reimbursed, forty-one dollars a day.
Yeah, because, you know, they're going to have that excess of their budget because the state's not housing those inmates at the correction facilities they'd normally be at because of the COVID. So I think they should, at this point, chip in more toward their inmates.
So the question is, you know, how come this thing goes unchecked? I mean, it seems like we've come back every couple of years and having to, you know, do this. It just seems like it's so unchecked.
Well, when we called their hand on it the last time, they done something.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't have to do that. The thing about the regional jail agreement back in the day was for one year, they stayed, and then they raised it to two years. Then it caused overcrowding, and so we've got so many issues with that when that went into place, and, and, you know, it's just, I don't know. You can't get out of it, we went through that hundreds of times here, but I don't know, it's just crazy if they would do that, and us have to deal with that here at the local level, have to fund this, that it should be funded through DOC.
Are you going to speak with them, or are we going to do a letter or?
Well, we'll do both, I'll call too, but we do a letter. Ms. Caglin, if you will, formulate a letter, one of you formulate a letter to both representatives, and so, even to the governor too, I wouldn't mind, the governor should know about it.
So that way, it doesn't become a bigger problem.
Right.
If we don't do something, let's keep.
It'll be fifty next time, if they will just say we're going to, you know. But see, if it's a COVID issue, they don't want to deal with, well, we got to deal with it, but they don't want to deal with it. And the same thing happened before, when it's twenty-nine, we got down like twelve or thirteen, there was some had medical conditions that they said they didn't want to deal with, so we had to keep them, you know, because they wouldn't deal with it. And for some reason, they think it's okay, you know, to put that burden back on the locality to do that. So if Lee County proceeded too, I'm sure Wise and Norton is too, so we can maybe.
It's unchecked for whatever reason, I'm not sure why.
You all saw the regional jail board, bring it up there. When is yours next meeting, you know?
Thirteenth, but I won't be out of town, I think Darrell's going to be out of town. I can talk to Sheriff Faitz and.
See, we ain't having any meetings this year, have a bill?
No, they're, they're.
I've been one this year.
You know, they're, they're sending out emails, polling for attendees now, to see if they're going to have a corner. So it's scheduled for the thirteenth, but it may not happen.
Well, they formulate a letter to our elected, local, state elected people, either inform it, copy it to the governor, because they, they want to do the right thing with this COVID thing, then that's doing the right thing, either reimburse us or take them, either one or the other, and so, anyway.
If it's related to COVID, look like some of the, maybe the COVID money could be used for that, could it?
If they approve that, yeah.
They'd be a good place to spend it, because it's, we got a little bit of money, you know, but I don't want to give it to them, and.
But yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think it'd be a good idea to use our COVID money. You know, that, that was a lot, unless we just have to. You know, that's my, Richmond's responsibility, I would think. You know, except, except that too, I've not heard anything about it lately, but the ambulance service, you know, we need to really keep a check on that, too.
That's not been resolved, or not. I even talked to Chairman Ward Sutcliffe in Wise County, he said they would look at it, see what they could do, but I haven't heard nothing back.
I know Nicholsville's had to go down there again, maybe one or two times or something. So I mean, that, you know. Nicholsville? Yeah.
They did do the billing, they, after myself and Mr. Carter and Mr. Clear made it, they did go back and do the billing, but I think some of them were past, you know, the deadline, so they were too old to collect. But I'll check with him and see if he's still having issues, or if they are working better when they get those.
Make sure they're getting paid and not let them get too old.
Yeah, he's not saying anything about it, like.
Okay, all right. Right, that sounds good, maybe they'll.
Must be a sore spot in our side for a while, these DOC inmates should be out of there. The thing about it, the old jail in Gaze City, thirty-seven is all it would ever hold, so you got more there than, if you couldn't even, if you had that many to lock up, you couldn't even do it, you know, if you had to use the old jail here in Gaze City, but anyway. All righty.
Could Matt and Clear do anything about this?
He won't.
State people, he needs to send the state a bill for them inmates, or something, maybe.
And he may be working on something along those lines, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but he, but he doesn't come to our, he's only been here once, one time that I can recall to our meetings, so.
I'd say he's pretty busy, but.
But I'm sure he's busy, but then it was kind of a state issue, and so we had to pretty much resolve it, you know, through that, through me.
Well, it's money for the authorities, so. He's getting paid more than that.
Yeah. All right, if you would formulate something, then board it just to look at and send that and to them, and see what we can do. I should know, I guess I should know this, but who is, as far as, over the Department of Corrections, is there a person that's over that, or how does that work? Do you know? The whole state? I mean, I don't know, you know, by chance, how that works?
No, I don't know who that would be, but we can find that information out.
But board to copy them too, because see what's happening here, and hope the other counties will see, you know, that they're up against it too, probably they're paying. Like Wise County probably has more inmates than we do, DOC inmates.
There's actually two boards, is that right? The one that, that you all are on, there's like thirty people on it or something? Then there's another board that's higher than them, is that right?
Executive committee.
Yeah, an executive committee.
Yeah, those come from the members of the regional general, all present.
Okay, all right. All right, we have the claims, we need a motion to approve the claim that's presented by Ms. Arns.
So moved.
All right, Mr. Jeter has made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, Ms. Arns.
Under Ms. LaGuis, I have a couple of things. The first one is a VDOT letter of support that I emailed you earlier this week in support of VDOT's application to the Eastern Federal Lands Access Program, and it is to pave three miles of Route 619 from the Wise County-Scott County line back this way toward Dungannon. And I just need authorization to send that to Mr. Ratliff at VDOT.
I think it's a great idea. I had talked to, might as well talk to about, about getting that road one day paved. There's some things, hopefully, will happen up there, it'd be some economic development and some stuff that's going to happen, this be a step in the right direction to get that area, get better access to it.
So you know how specifically where that's going to be at? I mean, are they going to go from where the pavement is now and then coming back down?
Correct.
Yeah.
As far as the Wise-Scott line, if they're even going to pay this part.
I'll be the guy, okay. Thank you.
And anyway, it's six point eight miles told them, so get down to three point eight would be great, eventually get it worked on, get that road better shaped, make better access to. And right now, the Wise County, especially city of Norton, is really taking advantage of having their access to the High Knob, so they got a paved road all the way up, and they even have assigned the gateway to the High Knob. And I teased them about it, I said, I said, well, you're on the back side of the High Knob, we're on the front side. They said, no, we're on the back side. I said, well, the north side is the back side, just teasing them. But anyway, it'd be great to develop that and get some stuff going on there, and anyway, paving that road, that much of it, would be great. So this letter of support, do we have a motion to approve?
Oh, we have a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Tiffin made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. who, second, any discussion? All three of them saying aye? Opposed?
He had some.
Would that bring the road back to where the guys want to develop all its property? Would that bring the pavement back up there?
That's where he ends his right pass, on this side of the development.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
I was hoping it'd come from the devil's bathtub side to go up, but I guess they're going to stop there and start the top and come down, but either way, it's in Scott County, if we can get pavement in Scott County, I'm for it, so. One thing about Wise County, I think they don't have any dirt roads. The reason being, they get that cost service tax that we could never, ever get, that's how they did that. They paved that road, they have, and because they got that cost service tax, they were able to do that, they were able to do that, so.
When's the last time we had VDOT here? Has it been a couple of months?
Last month.
The last month they were there.
Well, they've come a bi-monthly, I mean, that's kind of what initially was discussed.
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you look on the VDOT maps, Scott County has just as many miles of paved road as Wise County does.
They do.
We just have two hundred and forty more miles of dirt road that they don't have. They have a lot of roads in Scott County.
And like, I've heard that before, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Ms. Caglin, that is true, we actually have more paved roads than they do. But that we have, Scott County land-wise is a lot bigger than Wise County, but because we do have the two hundred and forty-some miles of unpaid road, looks like, but they did have all of us paved though because of the money they get from that, but we do, we have more paved roads than they do.
One other thing I have under Ms. LaGuis, I left a letter in your pocket this morning as a letter of support for the Child Advocacy Center in Big Stone, that's part of Mountain Power Older Citizens. They have already received the grant called Coronavirus Emergency Supplement Funding Grant through DCJS, and now they're asking for letters of support, and that's something that DCJS has asked for. So this one's kind of backwards, but they did ask us for their support.
With the letter of support, that's a good thing, we can do that, if we can do it, and implement it, it'd be great. So do we have a motion for this letter of support that Ms. Arns has requested?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Mr. Herron made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second, any discussion? All three of them saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else, Ms. Arns?
That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Derek Francis is here, do his presentation on requests, so if you would. Mr. Francis.
Good to see everybody, thanks for having me. It's been, been a while, I think I missed my June presentation, we weren't doing presentations then, so. I'll just go into Keith Park like I usually do, Scott Service Program, of course, y'all here, probably nothing to good things about them, I'm going to add to that. They've been assisting that program there in Keith Park, as far as I know, it's going well, it's going good, looking good. I talked to Justin with that, and talked to Larry Bowe, talked a lot on that, I haven't been up there in a while, but from what I hear, that's going great. So, good news on that program. Down at Duckville Community Park recently, they had a little issue there, David Carter, Mr. Carter let me know about the soft offense, and we were able to take care of that for them, got that repaired. take care of that for them, got that repaired. So, trying to do some work and help them down there as well. As far as on the rec side, obviously some of my stuff's been shut down, some not. The boat sites have been probably even more increased usage this year. A lot of things shut down, like everybody knows, due to COVID. A lot of restrictions, a lot of regulations. That's probably one of the things people got out and did more of. We do need to do a little bit of work at both Yuma and Wallo plans to do that. It's fine, but the, the access could be improved a little bit. There's some places that just over the years since we first built them have wore down. And they're, they're fine, but they need to be a little bit better, a little bit safer. So, there are plans to kind of enhance the access at those two sites. Again, due to COVID-19 and VHSL regulations, unfortunately, we're not able to hold our Otis Rotten Youth Volleyball League. That's by far our biggest and most popular program we offer, but I think everybody understands why that, the, we, we use the schools. The schools work well with us, but, you know, when VHSL kind of shut that down, that just really, I mean, you know, I just followed suit with that. So, now the next thing is, everybody's asking me, "Where are you going to have your basketball?" I have every intention of trying to have that, but again, due to how VHSL is doing their stuff, there's going to be a condensed sports season basically from December to May of everything. You know, every single thing. So, it's going to really, it may have to be altered, may have to be adjusted. I want to see what I can do, but I'm kind of at the mercy of the schools. They work well with us, but obviously VHSL, VHSL sports take precedence. So, we'll just have to kind of see what that atmosphere looks like at that time, see what kind of access I can get to the gym, so. Going down to Park and Golf Course, information, I've got some great news there. Currently, we're on an incredible, in my opinion, 73% increase over last year on revenue. I would love to come back in four months and eight months and be at 73% or higher. That's probably not sustainable, but that does give us, in my, great momentum going forward. A lot of that is due to increased memberships and increased daily play. That's going to continue. You're not, once you get that, you're going to keep that. I do feel fully confident there will be a good increase when I come back in four months and eight months. It may not be 73%, that's astounding. It shocked me when I put the numbers together, but a lot of that, again, COVID-19 shut down a lot of things. It didn't shut down that. So, you had a big increase in play from all ages, a lot of new players, a lot of returning players. So, that's, that's been a, a big boost for us there. There is a new scramble legs group. They started playing, they even started out with just a few players, now they're over 20 players in that group. It's really grown, they do it for exercise and the golf. Had to give props to Jason Dishner, he works in court services. Jason got with me and really, he put together a, a big plan for that. He really worked hard on that, just to get him some guys that wanted to play the evenings that I said, "Yes, that's fine," but he did all the, he did all the legwork on that. So, that's really grown, that's been a great thing, too. That's, that's just more, more people using that. Currently, we're doing a little special you've never done before. We're offering special membership rates for Scott County employees and Scott County school employees. That's going to run through November 30 at the end there. You know, any kind, any, anytime you can boost your membership at this time of year, you'll see the benefits of it in the spring and in the summer. So, we, we look to have a really busy spring. It's going to be a different looking one for us because VHSL's moved everything to the spring. Well, the golf season is going to be held like in the February, March time, which is a weird time, and of course, that starts right before we start our busy season. So, it's good, it's going to be busy, it's going to be weird, though, but you'll have some cold golfers up there, I think, in February. I mean, them kids are going to be, they're going to be out there braving the elements, but we'll, we'll, we like work with, you know, we love having the kids up there, the local high school golf teams, so. Lastly, I'll finish up again bragging on Scott Service Program. Justin and Shannon with the Scott Program, they're great. Anytime there's extra clean day, which isn't too often, they're great. Anytime I have a tournament coming up or any kind of special event, Justin's great to help me get some guys up there to weed eat and do some other projects. Plus, we have a, kind of a regular guy, too. I'll just brag on that Scott Program again. It's been, helped us out tremendously. For me personally, being selfish, it saves me three hours a day when, because I used to go down to Duckville to pick up inmates and bring them back if we needed work. I mean, that's why I told them, I said, "You're saving me three hours of driving today," just back and forth, so. Big shout out to them. And with the help of the community, this is kind of a separate thing. We have a community service worker come up and needs some hours. Bill will bring those pictures up. We got the cart shed painted. Doesn't sound like a big deal. I've been there 13, 14 years. That cart shed, I, I needed to do a better job. Skip was really good about doing the before and after. I just bring you the after, I need to get the befores. That looked awful before. It was old, I don't know it had ever been painted. That's not great photography there with the shade, I think, but in person, it looks a lot better. That, I mean, the members, people have been coming there for a long time, they really, that, it made a big difference. That is, you know, you pull up, that's one of the first things you see, first impressions are and everything, so that's something that need to be done, we got done. We're happy about that. Just like I said, that, that revenue increase and some other things, I just really hope we can carry that momentum going forward, and I think we can. I think, you know, once you get them, you kind of have them, you know, for a while. So, I think we, we're poised for some good, some good momentum there going forward, so. And really, that's about all I've got for, for this time. If I'll answer any questions, if you got anything, or...
Any questions for Mr. Francis?
I'll just second your plug about the Scott Program. It's worked, not only on this front, but, you know, many others as well. Saved the county and helped the county monetarily.
Yeah, the, the money, you know, we, I, I talked to Justin a lot, the money, the helping the people, that, that's a big part, the helping their lives, the money, and then the projects that's getting done, like the, the old, and Stacy talked about covering. There's just so many positives to it, there really are. Yeah, I agree.
It's good to see you back again, Danny.
Thank you, yes. I was just talking to Tina, I said, "Man, it's, it's different." I haven't been, she's like, "I've not been here in a while," so. Good to be back, to maybe slowly get back to normal.
We probably have news, that's my...
Yeah, that was good, that was, I was, I was tickled about that, so.
Presentation, again.
All right, thank you.
We're down to item 21. One thing, I was handed a note here, the Director of the Department of Corrections is Harold Clark, that's C-L-A-R-K-E. So, anyway, I think we could forward the letter to him, too. And I thank the person who sent that to him, appreciate it. But that's his name, Harold Clark, and we'll send the letter to him, too. You know, I've even said before that, and we had to on this jail thing, is to, if you brought a lawsuit against them, to make them, make them do what they agreed to do. We just, you know, the contract we have to do that, and the Department of Corrections to, to renege on their own agreement. I mean, if we have to do that, I would be open to it, go after our money. Harold Clark. All right, we're down to the item 21. Do we have anything for closed session? Fred, we don't do it?
Not that I'm worried.
Okay, there is nothing for closed session. So, we're down to comments, requests, recommendations from the board. Mr. Jeter, do you have anything for us to do?
I'll just follow up on last meeting. Bill asked you about visiting the sites. How's that going?
Going, going, Bill. I've been to all of them, but a couple of them, get to Dungannon, but we've resolved some issues and, and working on new issues.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Bill.
Anything else? Mr. Tipton?
Just a couple of things. VDOT, and as, I think the last month we mentioned, we'd had done like 14 work orders up in the upper part of our district, and the only, and I've not really got the comments back from that, but I think they went up there with some tar and, and patched some holes in the road, but I went back and looked, and I couldn't see anything done with it, ditches and tiles and work that need to be done. And I know VDOT is stretched, you know, with personnel, and they've had some, you know, problems there, and, but hopefully some of that's getting resolved, but if we could just reach out again, Frida, and, and even with the mowing, you know, and I went and talked with them about that, you know, I thought maybe they're waiting till the frost comes and they won't have to worry about doing it. But there's a lot of areas in our district that needs to be mowed still. And the other thing, email, I know there was some discussion, I guess it come from Frida or, or Bill about, maybe Bill, about the courthouse and the flag down there and, or signage. I think Selma had gotten in on that, she can speak to that, but just where we had on the flag and, you know, signage for a courthouse.
We haven't moved forward at all since Ms. Hitt's email on it. I mean, we, we had discussed, during the email, I talked about, we had discussed getting Bristol signs down to do a estimate on a signage in front of the courthouse. And we have the flag pole that was here that we had talked about putting up, but during the email of correspondence, we talked about maybe something more grand, but we've been working on finishing up the roofing project for the last month, and that's been our focus on it. So, I haven't, I haven't went forward on signage. That's, that's something that the board will have to decide to do. Putting, putting anything on the courthouse is a big deal. So, signage would need to be really looked at, and I don't want to make that decision on my, you know, what, what the letter, the font, or the size, or what it says, or anything like that.
Yeah, I think that's important, too. As you said, more grand with, with a flag pole. I think this, the flag pole that was here was what, a 20-foot?
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I just think we need something a little more, as you said, grand, you know, down there, since it is our courthouse.
Our, our maintenance guys can handle installing a 20-foot flag pole, but you get into a 40-foot, 50-foot flag pole, that's contractor.
Yeah, I understand. And maybe we could work through that. That'd be great.
Anything else? Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to thank everybody for what, what they're doing. Thank VDOT for what they have done. We had some big potholes on Dean Holler Road, Twin Springs Road. They, they fixed a lot of those. Twin Springs Road, I would, it is in bad shape, you know, for it to have a high school on it, which it has a lot of travel. I don't know when the last time it was repaved, but it is in fairly bad, bad shape, rough. Like I said, the, the potholes that they're out in, but anyway, need to, need to be looking at that in the future. I talked maybe a couple of meetings ago about the, some brush and small trees as you pull out of Twin Springs Road on the 71. I think Mr. Dinges asked which side of the road it was on. After I get to looking at it, it's both sides. You know, I don't know how we could eliminate those, but it is, there's actually a big black mark where it looks like a tractor and trailer, or maybe a dump truck, has locked our brakes up, and I'm going to say it's because of somebody coming, because you can't see, you know. Of course, the speed limit, we talked about speed limits earlier, of course, it's 55 on 71 until you get right there, and it changes to 25. You know, somebody that don't know the area, you know, comes through there and then they see the stop sign, or the speed limit sign, there's not much reaction time because you can't see because of those trees. But, but if we could figure out a, a way to do that, even if it's, I've talked to some people that, that owns that on one, one side of the road, maybe, maybe we could get together and cut it, I don't know. But anyway, we need to, need to try to figure out a way to do that. You know, I was talking about the mowing. You know, I've, I've noticed, my road, I live on the Long Holler. You know, you can mow it, and in two weeks, it's right back. You know, this, this tall grass, it's called Johnson grass, and it grows like nothing else, you know. And, you know, I, I don't know the inch or two, you know, even roads that doesn't look like they've been mowed, they probably have. It just, it grows so fast. But if VDOT, VDOT could look into something to help limit this Johnson grass, it's hard. It's not an easy answer. You know, every farmer in Scott County would like to eliminate Johnson grass, but it's, it's, it's hard to do. But, you know, one, one thing maybe, you know, I've noticed that the mowing has changed how they mow the right of ways. You know, they, they come up 71 with just a, it's called a bat wing bush hog. You know, they're only mowing three or four feet. You know, they're not mowing much with a, I don't know, 15-foot bush hog, you know. You know, used to, they, they had that bush hog on a arm that could reach over the guardrails, and that could get up on the banks and stuff like that. And I don't know if something restricted them. It's probably money, I'm sure, budget. But if we could get back to that, to have, have those, when they mow the right of ways, to have that thing that reaches over the guardrail and up on the side of the banks, you know. They, well, they're, they're, they're not using it on 71 and, and up through there, so may, maybe they could utilize that maybe a little, little bit more. I know used to, they did. I mean, used to, you, when you come upon somebody mowing, they would have three or four tractors, you know. I mean, it, it was a big, big deal. Something's changed there, I don't know what it is, but, but anyway, if we could get, get back to that, I, I think it would help some. I drove by the Veterans Memorial the other day. It does need to be mowed again, unless somebody's mowed it the last week or so.
It wasn't this morning. I don't know, yeah. I've already talked to Richard Dinges about it.
Okay, all right.
And I've already, yeah, I already got some word from American Legion about that, too. They were wanting to know what was happening with that.
Okay, yeah. Maybe, you know, if they could get in there and clean it one more time, I'd say we'd probably, probably do it for the year, but, you know, that's, that's something we need to pay attention to and have somebody, you know, a, a regular mowing schedule. I know the VDOT was, that's their responsibility, but because of the COVID, you know, I think that's sort of limited what they can do. But anyway, I appreciate what everybody's done, and I hope everybody has a good night.
On the Veterans Memorial, it was my understanding last time that happened, that the, in the Scott workers mowed it.
They did.
And that they were going to handle that from howl and through VDOT. I don't know if it's VDOT calling in to do it again, or how that is. I sent a message to Justin to see what the, that schedule looks like. So, we'll, we'll try to get that going again.
And Jeremy, in your area, I saw a video the other day of helicopters. Was that not in that 71, Twin Springs Road area?
Uh, yeah, when I seen them, they were in the, they were in the Bill Fuller area, the snowflake area, what we was talking about earlier. But they're cleaning right, power line right of ways, which is off the road. It's not right there on the road. And, you know, the, the things that, that really, you know, this, of course, you have the Johnson grass, but this Kudzu, you know, I've noticed there are several signs that you can't see the signs. It's completely took the signs. And, and, you know, some of, some of the trees, small, small trees, it's growing up on the bank, that Kudzu is growing up those trees, and it's bending the trees over, and when you come around certain curves, it's eye level, or it looks like it's eye level. You know, I don't think anybody's hitting them, but i, if it's left unchecked, eventually, you know, there's going to be a problem there. To me, that, that bush hog on a arm, if they could go back and use that, that, that would really help. Like I said, I don't know what the restrictions or what happened there, but if we could check on that and see.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bricke?
I've heard Danny say several times this year, since I came on the board, about, well, the committee spent so many hours on this or that, and, you know, we need to really look at what they've said. Recently, that's, that's really hit me because if you think of social, all the people that are under our umbrella, Social Services, the Sheriff's Department, Health Department, School Board, EDA, all the constitutional officers, if you look at everything, and I think Darrell said from the Budget Committee, there's 52 or 53 budgets that we approved in this, in the spring. And to ask this board, a few numbers of people that we've got, to know every budget and to know everything going on in every committee, there's not a, a way on God's green earth that you could do that. That's the reason we have these committees. That's the reason we try to find good people to go on these committees.
And, uh, and I heard a statement this past week, that's the reason that, that I was voted in onto the board, so I knew everything going on. I don't know everything going on, but when Bill stands up here and these, and Derek stands up here and these other people stand up and tell me, then I know, and you know, what usually winds up before us is, is problems. And, uh, and that's what, what we try to, to deal with. The COVID committee is a, is a new one. And, uh, this, this money, I, you know, uh, we've got a committee that handles that also, but, but I just wanna know that I think that, uh, that these committees are doing a great job. And as we get people on committees, and we had two on EDA board last month, and need a new one for this new committee, we really need to, to try to get out and, and bring these people in that can do a good job for us, cause that's who we rely on. The other thing that I would like to know more about personally, and, and Frida, if you and Sally could find, I, I'll, I'll read up on it and I'll study up on it. But this thing about Scott County not being a distressed area, I'm really curious about that. I've, I've mentioned it the last two or three times we've met, and, uh, I, I don't know if it's a positive or a negative. And that's what I want to find out, if it's good.
When it comes to getting money, it's a negative, but, but for our county, it's a positive because we are a, you know, a...
Well, in name, I mean, in saying, you know, we're not distressed, that sounds good. But if we're not getting that money that everybody around us is getting, I'd just like to study up on that just a little.
I think, just briefly, how they kind of determine that is because of how we lay next to, uh, in part of the metropolitan area of the tri-cities. And it has to do with the income level, the number of people, you know, that are working at the Eastman and, you know, different places like that.
I understand that, but there, there's the economic corridor also that the EDA and John are always, how do those two interact? And is, is the distressed part of it helping us with the economic corridor where we're in the same as Tennessee Eastman and Upper East Tennessee? It, it don't make sense to me. And if you could, if you could tell me somewhere to read, you don't have to explain it to me, just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
Tell me a place that I can understand it a little better. I just don't understand why we're not distressed. But, and then we're in the same corridor as Sullivan County and Kingsport. I don't understand that.
The one thing, the one thing that drives that is our poverty level. I think it's nineteen percent. It's like twenty-six percent in Lee County and twenty-two percent in Wise County. So that's one thing too. The employment numbers is better here than it is those counties. So all of that is a driving force because, I mean, it's, it's, there's real numbers there that they base that on. It's the poverty level, uh, you know, the unemployment rate, the, the, uh, incomes, the low and moderate, uh, incomes is better. We may not see it, but overall, we're in pretty good shape, you know, the county is. And that's why, that's how they come up with that. But, uh...
You know, something that separates us too is, uh, the lack of coal and gas.
Of course, it is.
Uh, you know, Lee County, Wise County, Buchanan County, Dixon County, even Russell County, you know, they're, uh, they're, they've lost a lot of jobs. Uh, but I'm, I'm like you, you know, but, but something he said today about the, uh,
Census area?
Something that, that they changed, the, uh, I rub it down, but anyway. He said something that, that, that they had changed something to where they would be able to, uh, separate certain parts of county as being distressed, like, like the Black, yeah, Cliff Mountain.
Right.
Uh, so maybe, maybe in the future, that, that might help us some, you know. But the census, you know, people need to fill this out. That's what's gonna tell the tale.
Right.
You know, if, if they don't fill it out or don't fill it out honestly or whatever, it, that, that could come back to hurt us. The A, A R C.
Right.
That stood for.
Appalachian.
Appalachian region?
Okay, alright.
But that's, that's just been on my mind and I would like a little more reading on it, just so that I understand it. But I appreciate all of you. I think you all do a good job. I think you're here for the right reason. And I appreciate our committees that do such a good job. And I know the hours you put into the budgets and the waste and, and this and that. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
That's one thing I said, you know, when we, upon a committee, you know, I'm gonna take what they say pretty seriously. If that's why we have it, you know, if we don't, if we don't take their word on it, you know, and go with their recommendation, then we're, you know, we're... But, but we have separate ideas. It's like the budget committee, they present to the full board to approve. So when we do that, it's important that we, that we, we gotta have a budget committee or any of these committees we have. That is, but we do need to really weigh heavily their opinion and their decision that comes out of that committee. So, I thank you, Mr. Brickhead. Ms. Hood?
Okay, on the, uh, identifying the courthouse, I think it's very important. And I did propose that through an email to the board and the staff. Um, I can do further research and come up with a suggestion of what type sign. And that way we would know more about what it would cost. So I will do that. And on the flag pole, I did talk with, uh, Mr. Bo Taylor about the twenty-foot flag pole. He would love to have that there. Does the board need to vote whether we put that or could that be done?
I don't think the board would need to vote on anything. We can, like, like I said, uh, told Mr. Tipton, our maintenance crew can install a twenty-foot flag pole. We just haven't gotten to that yet. Uh, but if you want to do something more grand, uh...
Well, I was thinking since we already have that and that would be something that would be no cost, um, no extra cost, then I, I mean, personally, I think we should do that. I think the sign is more important than doing a grand flag pole at this point because, as I said in my email to you all, I did see a video online where somebody did not know what that building was. They were calling it a church. And I think to identify it and put when it was established, I think would be a good idea for Scott County. So I will, I'll, I'll check into that and look at signs and, and send you all some pictures or whatever of other courthouses and we can make a decision from that. And then we could find out what the cost maybe would be. Another thing is I've dealt a lot with VDOT. I was bombarded with calls and emails and messages about the weeds on Highway twenty-three. And I kept begging and begging to VDOT and I was told that they were working on Highway fifty-eight in Lee County. Personally, I thought twenty-three should take precedence over that, but, and then I kept pushing. I said, somebody's gonna have an accident. So then I was told that they would come with a weed eating crew and, and cut the worst, uh, areas, which they did. And now I think that mowed all of it. It was very nice. I really appreciate it. And then I had other VDOT questions during the month that I went out to check on. And while I was out, I saw a lot of people in the Fairview area, Canton and Blackcomb. And I've visited with some of the people in District Six, and that's always a good experience for me. And also I've gotten questions from the Fairview residents. They want to know the status of Phase Two on their water project. So if one of you all could, that it's on a PSA board, do you have any information on that?
Not anything told me. Maybe I've already...
You, you told me that they were expecting the permit, that in fact thought it would already be here.
Yeah, and so he was supposed to check on that, but I haven't heard from him. Those take time. There's no, do we keep twist their arm? Can't make, do it any faster or anything like that? They can check and see?
Yeah, probably need to be checked. And, and also since this Blackcomb project, I have become a water person now. More so than VDOT. So I've been handing out applications.
Welcome to the club.
For people to mail in to, uh, PSA wanting water in their areas. So, that's all I have. It's been a busy month. It's been an enjoyable month for the board of supervisors position.
Uh, just one quick thing. Um, sorry I didn't mention it earlier. In our district, one of y'all was talking about the helicopters coming into the area, I guess probably cutting on the power lines and such. Um, I don't know if there's anything we can do. I know it's become problematic in our area since Point has taken over a lot of that. Our power lines are not getting cut and we're having more power outages. So is there anything we can do in terms of letters to Point to see where they're at? It's, it's just becoming more of a big problem and I, I don't know that they're gonna do anything. So who, who, who do we need to reach out to?
I don't have a clue. I guess you...
I figured you was gonna say that.
I, I, we've never dealt with them. They're a private company, so as far as any leverage we might have, I don't know what it would be, but, uh, I don't know. You might try it yourself and call and see what you can do, but we have you.
Oh, I'll try.
Alright, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Justin emailed me back and said that they would have the Vet Memorial, uh, site mowed by next week at the latest.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Yeah, getting ready to get her on that. Mr. Groove, you have anything?
I just wanna say it is good to see everybody and I appreciate the opportunity to be able to zoom in to the meeting. I didn't, didn't really wanna miss it. Um, I have talked to the, you know, I was telling my, the water project. I mean, I have, you know, my heart goes out to those folks still. The dumpster sites, you know, just like you'd said, Marshall, we, uh, we are all impacted by that. I mean, not just the citizens, me as a, as a citizen here in Scott County too. I am concerned about that as well. Um, the care is that committee, you know, I do wanna mention that, that, you know, Jeremy and I are on that, uh, committee and we've, uh, we've met a few times and discussed how they're going to, uh, you know, some of the projects and things that are going on around the county. And that's, that's been a good, that's been a good, uh, experience to be able to see what, and be able to help the folks that are doing that. Um, getting them the PPE and things they need. Um, I do have one question. Do we know anything about the, have we heard anything on the cell tower in Midway?
I believe it is on.
I think it's working, uh, Monday night.
It is working?
I believe my Bluetooth worked all the way from Clenchport to Dungannon, so it, that signal came from somewhere.
I had a message that it was turned up.
Okay. And the one in Nicholsville is it should be able to run it too. Do you know if it is or not?
They've got the structure up. They still like putting the receivers, receptacles up on top of it. It looks like a cell phone personally.
Okay. I'm just kidding. I had a question about that and I, and I honestly, I, I didn't know, personally speaking. Uh, but I do appreciate everybody and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, man. I'll save myself a life for a reason. There's a couple of things I need to talk about. Uh, Larry Keith called me and, uh, he, or Larry Dick, sorry, about to keep Memorial Park. And we had approved them for some money to get some stuff done up there. And the prices of material has gone up a bunch. If you go to Lowe's or any of these places, you see how much has gone up. And he wondered if we could get another thousand dollars for them to do the work there. They're using the, the service, Scott Service Program people and they've been able to do a lot. I went up there, looked at, I'm to answer them actually what they've done. But there's a few more things that need to get done. He had four hundred dollars left of what we had approved. And he wondered if we could get another thousand because of the prices of the material has gone up, and it has tremendously. If you've been to any work where they're selling building supplies or maintenance material. And so he, he was gonna be here, but he had reason not to be. He would, he would come to the board himself. I told him I would do it. Didn't want him here to be, you know, to expose anybody or anything, so I told him I would do it for him. So, uh, anyway, uh, we can take this from our contingency fund if you, the board so agrees to do that. But he did ask for an additional thousand dollars to do that work there. That is a county park. I mean, it's not like it's a Nicholsville Park or something. It is a county park that we, you know, we have, uh, it's a part of everything that we do here. So anyway, any discussion, if not, we don't take the vote. Yeah, we'll discuss it first. Do you have anything on it, Jeremy, your district?
I think the last time we, we did that, we did put a restriction on it. If they didn't spend all of it, they would give it back. I feel like we need to keep that restriction on it. Uh, and prices have, have went up. I mean, that is, but it, it looks good. I don't know exactly what they lack, but, you know, they have, uh, pressure washed the building and stained it and painted the bridge that goes across the road or the, uh, the structure that holds the bridge up on each side of the road. Uh, they're really doing a good, good job. It's a, it's a nice, nice park. It is. But I, you know, if we could keep that restriction on it, then I would make the motion to do that.
They said they had a four hundred and twenty dollars left, so they have right now because the cost has gone up and so, and it has. I mean, I agree with it a hundred percent, but, but you put that in form of the motion to approve this thousand dollars from our contingency fund. Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brickhead, second. Is there any discussion? I'll very well say an aye.
Aye.
Aye, so we'll do that. It starts. One other thing, there's a new little, little cafe in Dungannon and I told them I would plug here this morning. Uh, usually we don't do this, but they're brand new. It's a midtown diner there right in the middle of Dungannon. So I've been eating there. The food is wonderful. So if you get a chance, drop in and visit, they would sure love it. And, uh, they're doing pretty good. It's a small little place, but their food's really good. And, uh, so I told them I would do that. Alright, we're down to the end. Is there anything else before we adjourn till, uh, November the fourth?
I've got one thing.
Go ahead.
Down at the bottom, Gay City Fire Department under our, on our tablet here. Are we going to take action on that?
That's just a thank you letter.
Do what?
That's the thing they're, they're funding for the year.
Yep. But that's good. And I'm glad you brought it up because it's just, we need to know that, uh, I said, I forgot.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just from the volunteer fire department, Jeff Ricky had, uh, he's the chief and he had sent it out and they appreciate the funding. You know, I'm kind of, these, these are the people that are, and he's part of, part of seven, I mean, the county, the volunteer. And I don't hate to put a price on that. Dave Gill, your partner, Scott County Life saving Crew and Nicholsville, that's the all these people. Or got a lot of volunteers that's doing these things. And, uh, so anyway, it's just a letter from them thanking us for the fiscal year two thousand twenty twenty-one funding. Alright, thank you. Do you have something, Darrell?
Yeah, Riverside Development. I think, uh, John, he's over at EDA and over that. There need to be some bush hogging done down there. That place looks awful. It's growed up. It looks, it's an eyesore for the county when you come in and that's county land and it's growed up in weeds and, I mean, you can't bush hog it all, but they, some of that needs cleaning up.
We should have an email. See what they can do with that. I agree.
Cleaning up and the sign needs to be finished, uh, out front. And the EDAs collecting money on the property down there that they ran out, so they could spend a little of that, I think. I'm not saying the county pay for it, let the EDA pay for it. But it needs to be cleaned up and look a little bit more presentable. People coming in, they don't wanna build on a growed up thicket. That's all I got.
Anything else from anyone? Alright, next meeting will be, uh, November the fourth. Uh, we will be here if there's nothing else. This meeting is your boundary.